Okay, it's seven o'clock. Do we want to call, let this black in and call the meeting to order?
Sure.
Are we ready, Matt?
All right, let's go.
Yeah, we'll do a count then. Make sure CMNTV is ready to go as well. So we'll just do five, four, three.
Hi, I'd like to call the electronic meeting of the zoning board of appeals from Monday, March 10th to order at this point. Can we all please, whose present stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Injustice.
Thank you. Ms. Luto, when you're ready, can we have roll call, please?
Board member Allen.
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Board member Gesund.
Here in Berkeley.
Board member Krug.
Here in Berkeley.
Board member McAlpine.
Present in Berkeley.
Board member Euler.
Here in Berkeley.
Board member Ward.
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Chair Evans.
Ms. Luto, we did receive communication from Mr. Evans that he is unable to attend this evening's meeting due to a work commitment. So at this point, we would need a motion from my fellow commissioners to excuse Mr. Evans.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, do we need a roll call on that, Aaron?
Yes, we do. Gesund.
Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
I apologize, McAlpine, you're supposed to go last. So if I could call you again, McAlpine.
Yes. Okay, given Mr. Evans' absence, I just want to confirm we do have a quorum present for this evening's meeting. We do, so we will go ahead and proceed. Next up is to review our agenda. You've all received a copy of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions that need to be made? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda this evening.
So moved. Support.
Can we have roll call on the agenda, please?
Krug.
Yes.
Euler.
Sorry, yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Gesund.
Yes.
McAlpine. McAlpine?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm cutting, it's cutting out a little for me. All right, I'm gonna switch to, can you guys still hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. I took off my headphones. Next up is the review of our minutes from our meeting of April 12, 2021. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review those. If so, at this point, are there any changes or additions that should be made to those minutes?
No, I would like to move to approve the minutes as presented.
Perfect, thank you.
Support.
Okay, we'll have a roll call now, please.
Euler.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Gesund. I think we lost him. Oh, there he is.
He's back.
Unmute yourself.
There we go. Yes.
Krug.
Yes.
McAlpine.
Yes. Okay, next up on our agenda is old business. It's application PBA 0521, property at 2344 Royal, a variance request to construct an addition into the front yard setback, area accessory structure, and lot coverage. Can you provide us with the information regarding this, Ms. Luto, please?
Yes, I'd like to reference my May 6, 2021 review letter. As you may recall, this item was postponed from the April 12 meeting. This item is three variances, actually. The variance to construct the addition to the main house that encroaches six feet, three inches into the front yard setback, a variance of 570 square feet to exceed the maximum permitted combined floor area of all accessory structures, buildings and structures, and that includes the pool and the garage, and a variance to exceed the maximum lot coverage for all structures combined. Now, as you may recall, we did hold the public hearing at the April 12 meeting. We received communications via email and oral comments during that meeting from the public. All of those were in support of all three of these variances being requested. The applicant, Ms. Lorena Black, and the architects that she's been working with were both in attendance at that meeting and answered questions posed by the zoning board of appeals. However, during that discussion, the board members had asked if there were any modifications to the proposed pool, the accessory structures that would be willing to be discussed, to which the homeowner, Ms. Black, noted that she would entertain making some modifications. However, after about a week, Ms. Black and I had spoken, and she had consulted with the architect on making those revisions, as well as consulted with her family, and determined that she did not want to alter the plans, and they are resubmitted to move forward here as presented to you last month. So as I noted, no modifications to the plans have been made, and the plans that you are reviewing are the same ones that were reviewed at the last month's meeting. The homeowner did provide a letter from the Department of Veterans Affairs that was included in your packet. I have also included the emails and communications that were previously submitted to the community development department that were part of last month's package, just so you could refresh your memory on what those comments were. I have included a couple of sample motions for you, as I did last month, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you do have.
Are there any questions from any of my fellow commissioners?
Yes, I have a question. If you would go to the elevation, the garage elevation, if you take the 15 feet from the ground up to the, up to the eaves and the six foot, two inches, that totals 16, does not total 15, like the plans say. And if it was at 16, that would require yet another variance. And I pointed that out after the last meeting, and obviously, nothing has changed here.
Yes, that was, that was my error. So those would be, the original plans that were submitted way back when had included the garage elevation to go to the 16 feet. So they had modified the, the total elevation would change to 15. They didn't make the changes to the individual measurements. However, they had removed that variance request, and that's not part of this application. So if this project were to move forward, it would be in conformance with that 15-foot requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Luto, do we have any other communication besides what you've already provided for us in our packet?
I have not received any additional communications or emails, no.
Okay, are there any other questions from the commissioners? If not, I will go ahead. I see the petitioners are both present. We will open it up to comments from them. Okay, so we can unmute the blacks and determine who is going to speak on behalf, or if both of them would like to speak.
My husband is actually gonna speak this time, so he's on the call.
Mrs. Black, your husband is muted, so he may unmute himself.
He just tried to unmute. If he could try again, please.
How about now? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you now, sir.
Commissioners, good afternoon, or good morning, my time, I apologize. It's, it's the middle of the night here where I am. So, and, and I want to thank you all for the pledge of allegiance that, as a service member, that obviously makes me feel good. So I, I guess, and it's not so much a question, it's more of a statement, that you can't be in this place and do what I do and not think about home. And my home is Berkeley, Michigan. And given the things that I deal with on a daily basis and see on a daily basis, I want you to understand how completely and totally disappointing it is that we're sitting here talking about inches and feet and square footage and things like that. Because what the hell am I over here sacrificing for if not the American dream? So I've been on all the emails and read everything that this city is doing with its master plan. And we came to you with our master plan for our home. My wife is a 20-plus-year veteran of the military. She has given everything to the military, to the point that it has caused her physical problems. And that's why we need a pool. But it, it shouldn't even be that. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be questioned, or the motive shouldn't be questioned. This city has a master plan. We have a master plan for our home. So I don't know another way to say that we have earned this. So we're asking you to give us exactly what we asked for, or give us none of it, but lead. That's, that's the way I feel about it. But hey, I'm a fighter. I'm not a politician. I'm a leader. I'm not a bureaucrat. So I don't, I don't know any other way but to be direct. Berkeley's my home. I'd fight for it. I defend it, just like I do on a daily basis here. So again, we sit up there and we give the pledge. What are we doing it for? And I'm not trying to be insulting, or caustic, or corrosive, or any of that. I'm telling you, as a member of this community, that, that sees things on a daily basis, that this is our home. And this is our dream home. We got six kids. And when I look at the landscape of our city and everything that, that has taken place in terms of building and, and the direction that we want to go, and I'm told that we're arguing over, not even arguing, I've gotta come and, and ask you for permission over matters of square footage and feet and all this other stuff. It's disappointing. So my wife really wants this, but it's me. I was the one that said, no, we're not, we're holding our ground. And if you want to say no, you say no. But I'm just telling you, you say no. When you give that pledge, when you see a flag, when you say thank you for your service, all those things that people say in passing and all of that, I get it. This is where all of that stuff has to matter. And whether it's military or fire or teachers or whatever, man, I, I need this board to lead with what's right. All we're trying to do is exactly what this city is doing with the master plan. And that's what I'm up here in the middle of the night to say. And that's all I have to say.
Does that conclude your comments, then, Mr. Black?
Ma'am, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I probably should be adjusting you by your rank. I apologize for that. Ms. Black, do you have any other, anything else you'd like to add? Okay, well, thank you for those comments, and thank you for your service and what you do for us on a daily basis to protect us and give us what you give us. Are there any comments from the, does any of the commissioners have any comments or questions? Ms. Ward?
Sergeant Black and Mrs. Black, was there any consideration given to
Major, ma'am.
the pool smaller and, and making it a lap pool as opposed to the size that you are requesting? Mrs. Black, you're, you're muted.
My understanding is that the pool, the way that we, the narrow and length of the pool was to make it a lap pool. We did look at making it smaller, but then it does, with, when you think of the physical therapy and the laps, it, but, but yes, that's what it's intended.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from my fellow commissioners? If not, we will move on to public comments. And at this point, I do have a statement that I need to read. We would like to move to public comment. The public will have an opportunity to speak, to speak during public comment. Participants in the webcast can utilize the raise hand function by selecting managed participants on the bottom of your dashboard, and then select the more button in the right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you to allow you to speak. For those who have called in, you will be placed in queue for public comments by selecting star nine. Our moderator will announce the last four digits of your telephone number for recognition and unmute you for you to speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak. This is the same as we allow for in-person meetings. Once your three minutes are up, you will be muted by our moderators. Additionally, comments can be submitted prior or at this time to zoning@berkeleymich.net, where residents and community members can submit public comments as well. Your e- must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances of this virtual space, we may not be able to read through all email comments, but know that we have stored them and acknowledge them on the public record. To participate in public comments, you can dial by phone at 312-626-6799 and enter meeting ID 997-0652-8278. At this time, are there any public comments?
Hey, Madam Chair, if you can.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, if you can hear me, just for the record, my rank is major.
Okay, thank you very much, Major. Mr. Baumgarten, do we have any public?
Madam Chair, I do not see anybody indicating that they wish to speak.
Okay, we'll give it a couple more seconds, and then we can move on. Oh, Ms. Ward?
My apologies to Major Black. I thought I had urged you were sergeant, but my apologies.
No problem, ma'am.
Okay, at this point, I will conclude and close the public comment portion of our meeting and open it back up to the commissioners for comments and a motion. Do I have any other comments from any of my fellow commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
We had a discussion last meeting regarding, well, regarding a few things. One was changing the size of the, changing the size of the pool. The other was, what was, I think it was Mr. Euler that required, that asked for a note as far as the requirements for, I believe it was Mrs. Black, Mrs. Black's disability and why that was required. But other than that, I don't see any change, any justification for changing what I believe was the general consensus from the last meeting. We do appreciate the blacks' service to our country, but we have our own oath that we take to support the, to support the Constitution of the United States and the rules and regulations governed by the Michigan Zoning Act in the city of Berkeley. And there's no, there's nothing in the ordinance to give leeway for military service or for, or for physical disability. I suffer from a physical disability myself, and if I needed modifications to my home that weren't within the zoning, that didn't fit the zoning ordinance or fit the five criteria that we have to adhere to, I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't be able to get the zoning ordinance. So I, I can't, I can't support this.
Are there any other comments from my fellow commissioners?
Well, if you don't mind, my name's Eric McDonald. I'm just jumping in as an alternate. Can everybody hear me? I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay, good. This is the first time I, I'm not really good with Zoom, so this is my first. But it seems like the number one issue, they had three that they were going for. Number one, the setback seems pretty good, not a bad, it's been done before. It's not that, that big of a deal. But we, when I thought, when I looked at it, I said, yes. Number two, can they make the pool bigger, the garage bigger? Can they make a, you know, something that nobody else can do? You had already determined at the last meeting that you thought, can you get it smaller? Can you make it fit within the, you know, what would work with the master plan? Which seems to me like, you know, reasonable thing to do. Number three, if they keep with the big garage and the big pool, then they're gonna exceed the 35% for the master plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, sorry, that's not gonna work in the city. We have a master plan that says we have X amount we can do. I love the fact he's a major. I'm a lieutenant. Who cares about that? We have to move on to what's the master plan. If I'm wrong, please tell me.
Mr. Euler, you had your hand raised as well.
Yeah, I, I also, you know, I, it's, Major Black said he prefer a blunt assessment, and I thought the presentation was, was inappropriate. I thank them for their service. My wife's a disabled veteran. You gotta be careful throwing this kind of stuff around and making it the, the feature of a presentation. It has nothing to do with whether or not this is, this is a valid variance. And to lead with it and kind of beat us over the head with it, I didn't think was appropriate. I won't be voting for it.
Ms. Ward?
Thank you, Ms. McAlpine. My thoughts on the matter is that for the size of the lot, this is a very ambitious project. I, I could vote in favor of the variance on the addition to the main house. We, we did that at the last meeting. We allowed the homeowner to add on to the front of the property. But again, the pool and the other accessory building, the garage, I think there, the petitioner is trying to make something fit in a lot that is not designed for that size. It's like trying to put 10 pounds of sausage in a five-pound casing. And I, I just feel that this is an overly ambitious project. I definitely understand the need for additional room in the house. Yes, with six children, definitely. But as for variance two and three, I, I just feel that we are voiding the master plan and voiding, as Mr. Gesund said, our allegiance to the United States Constitution, the state of Michigan Constitution, and the Charter of the City of Berkeley, and the zoning rules and regulations of the city and of the state. For that reason, I cannot support the entire application. I would be willing to vote in favor of a variance for the front yard setback. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Allen, I think you had, I thought you might want to speak. I wasn't sure.
Nope.
Okay, so I believe the best, in, in the interest of serving the petitioner in the best way possible, I believe it's important for us to consider each of the three variances. So we will address the first one, which is to construct an addition that encroaches into the front yard setback. Mr. Allen?
Yes, I would be in favor of this because part of the front of the house is out at that level right now. It wouldn't do any undue harm to the neighborhood to square up the front of that at all, and I would be very much behind that.
And I, I would, Ms. McAlpine, I would support Mr. Allen if he is interested in making a, a motion to that effect.
I appreciate that, but not at this time. I want to listen to what everybody else has to say.
Are there any other comments on their request for variance number one from the commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Do, do we need to re-separate these like we did in the last meeting to vote on them individually, or?
Yes, so we're having discussion on the first one, and then we'll take a motion, and then we'll go to two and three.
Okay. So I, unless anyone else has any comments, I, I could make a motion supporting the first variance.
Can we, I'll hold to, are there any more public comment, or any other comments?
Just one more comment.
Okay.
Before we make a motion on anything, I would like to have the five points read aloud.
Okay.
The guidelines.
Can you read our guidelines, please?
Number one, the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. Number two, the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Three, strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdens them. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant, as well as other property owners. And five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties.
Thank you.
Okay, then I believe we have, Mr. Gesund was ready to make a motion.
Yes, I'd like to move in support to grant the variance on, on, wait, let me get my bearings here. For PBA 0521, I guess we can call this subject A, or one, to grant a, an addition on the main house that encroaches six feet, three inches into the front yard setback.
Support.
Okay, can we have a roll call? Oh, Mr. Allen?
Yes. Could you please say why you moved and supported that relative to the five guidelines?
Boy, you're gonna make this difficult.
Okay, sorry.
Let's see.
Mr. Gesund, you have sample motions included in your packet, if that would make it easier for you.
Yeah, I'm looking for the sample motions.
Mr. Gesund, would you like me to read them? Mr. Gesund, would you like me to read them? I have them in front.
Yes, if you could, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Ward.
In the matter of PBA-0521, the request for variance to construct an addition that encroaches into the front yard setback of residential property located at 2344 Royal, Zone Single Family Residential, to be approved due to the following findings of fact that the five standards of review have been met. One, the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical condition of the property. Part of the house already is in the front yard and that was approved back in the 60s or the 70s. Ms. Schluto gave us the exact date. And so basically, the homeowner is asking to square up the property. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. The fact that previous zoning boards, a zoning board approved this encroachment on the front yard is, is not a result of this property owner or even the previous property owner. I think it goes back probably several property owners. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for permitted use or will render conformity for those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. And my feeling is that with six children and a mother and a father, that's eight people in a home that is a little over 1,600 square feet. And I think this would just provide some additional room and make the house more attractive by squaring it off. The requested variance, number four, is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. And in that neighborhood, there are many of the properties that encroach in the front yard. So I don't feel that this will in any way be injurious to the neighborhood. And that answers number five as well, the surrounding properties.
Thank you for reading that, Ms. Ward. Ms. Schluto, can we have a roll call vote, please?
So that was the Mr. Gesund's motion. And do we have a second?
Ms. Ward.
Ms. Ward was acting second. Okay, thank you. Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Euler, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I don't think, did we have debate on the motion? It just got made and?
No, we didn't. You're right.
Were we just voting on the motion?
No, you're right.
I did open it up and that's when Mr. Gesund started. So if there's any more comments on?
Yeah, but I, I thought then we were just getting through, kind of reciting the elements. I?
Okay, so we'll go back. Mr. Euler, do you have any comments on what would be variance number one, which is construct an addition, addition that encroaches into the front yard setback?
Yeah, my, my comment would be to repeat, I think I made it last week. And the difference between this and the previous applicant, which was kind of a similar issue, was I thought that, and the phrase might not be appropriate, they were giving back the porch. And so in effect, they were lessening the non-conforming use. Here, they're increasing the non-conforming use. And while it might look good or be consistent with other things in the, in the neighborhood, it doesn't meet criteria three, I don't think. Because, you know, it, it could be as is. It's not absolutely essential. So I don't think it meets the criteria. I don't think that was addressed. And that's the reason why.
Mr. Gesund, I'm not sure if you would like to keep your motion or if you would like to rescind it at this point?
I, I'd like to keep it.
Okay. Are there any other comments, Mr.?
Yes. This is Eric McDonald.
Mr. McDonald, I don't think, because you're an alternate, that we can really have you commenting during the portion of the serving Commissioners?
No problem.
And is that correct, Ms. Schluto?
No, that's not correct. He's acting as a full-bodied member.
Oh, I'm so, I am so sorry. I thought he was, I thought he was eight. I am so sorry. I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. McDonald.
Well, I just had a co, one comment on that. You know, when it comes to that, I agree with that it was inappropriate, you know, the way that that was presented from the major. I thought that was very inappropriate. But other than that, I think last meeting?
Hold on, what, what, what was inappropriate?
Your, I'm sorry, Mr. Black, are you spoken on this?
At this point, we're just, we're having comments from the Commissioners.
Hey, I'm, I'm trying to, he said, he said something I, that I said was inappropriate.
Let's, I think.
I thought this was a closed Commissioner.
At this point, we'll just, if we can just stick to the, the variance that, the specific variance and not go back to any of the comments, that would be, I think, appropriate. Mr. McDonald, if you can just provide your comments.
The last meeting you had was at 2928, I think it was Rubina. And you pretty much, you know, the first variance that you're talking about, you, you extended to them back at the last meeting. So all favor for that first variance. Yes.
Okay, do we have any other question, any other comments from any other of the fellow Commissioners? Ms. Ward?
I thought I saw Commissioner Krug with his hand up. I may have been mistaken.
No, I'm all set.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, I believe we have a motion on the floor that we need to vote on?
That's correct.
Can we have roll call vote, please?
Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
Prue?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Euler?
No.
McAlpin?
Yes. Mr. and Mrs. Black, your variance for number one, to construct an addition that encroaches into the front yard setback has been approved. So now we will move on to variance number two, which is the combined area of the proposed accessory structure. It exceeds 800 square feet or one-half of the ground floor of the main building. Can I open this up to discussion from the Commissioners, please? Does anyone have any comments or questions? Seeing as there are none, I will ask if there is someone who would like to make a motion? Ms. Ward?
I will move that the second variance, which is of 570 square feet, exceeds the maximum permitted combined floor area of all accessory buildings and structures. And I, I would move that we deny the second variance request.
Could we please go through the five criteria specifically to this one?
Certainly, Mr. Allen. I'm happy to do that. Again, in the matter of PBA-0521, the request for a variance for accessory structures proposed to exceed the maximum area located at 2344 Royal, Zone Single Family Residential, to be denied for the following findings. One, the need for the variance is due, is not due to a unique circumstance or physical condition of the property. The need for the variance, number two, the need for the variance is not, is the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owner. Three, strict compliance with the ordinance will not unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for its permitted use purpose. Four, the requested variance.
Ms. Ward, I think we, we lost you after three.
Sorry. Number four, the requested variance is not the minimum variance requested or is necessary to do justice to the applicant and the property. And five, the requested variance will and could adversely impact the surrounding property.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second for the motion? Okay, Ms. Ward is, made the motion with Mr. Krug offering the second. Roll call, please.
Allen?
It was a motion to deny?
Correct.
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes, to deny.
Prue?
Yes.
McDonald?
Deny.
Euler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McAlpin?
Yeah. Variance number three, was the total lot coverage exceeds the maximum 35% permitted lot coverage? That is the third variance that they had requested. Any other comments on this question, on this variance?
If I, if I may, I think, I think that without two, they don't need three.
Go ahead, Mr. Gesund.
I, I think without two, they don't need three, that those two were supposed to go together.
Right, so I just think it's a, just a tying up the loose ends to go ahead and have an approval on this.
Okay, or a denial.
Or a denial, correct, sorry. Is there anyone who'd like to make this motion or a motion?
I would move to deny for the same reasons that were just articulated by Ms. Ward for the second requested variance.
Support.
So we have a motion to deny by Mr. Euler and a support by Ms. Ward. Can we have a roll call, please?
Gesund?
Yes, to deny.
Prue?
Yes.
McDonald?
Deny.
Euler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
McAlpin?
Yes. I'm sorry, unfortunately, the, the variance request you have for number two and number three have been denied. Okay, moving on to our next item on our agenda is new business. Do we have any new business that we need to discuss? Seeing as there's no new business, I will move to other business. Seeing as we have no other business, I will move on to staff and board member report. Ms. Schluto, do you have anything that you'd like to share with us this evening?
I've shared with, with all of you recently, your most recent and updated attendance as well as your continuing education credit. I noted that there is a zoning board of appeals training at the end of the month, June 30th. There are some other ones, but this is, that is the last date of the fiscal year. So that would be your last opportunity to satisfy that credit. If you're interested in that training session through Oakland County, please let me know and I can get you registered.
Do any of my fellow Commissioners have questions on how many training hours they have? I know Ms. Schluto has shared those, but if you have not received those, you can reach out to her and she can tell you how many hours you have recorded currently. Seeing as we don't have anyone, we will move on from liaison report. The last thing on our agenda is public comments. We'd like to move to this public comment section now. The public web and opportunity to speak. To speak during public comment, participate in the webcast, can utilize the raise hand function by selecting managed participants on the bottom of the dashboard and then select more. The more button on the bottom right-hand corner. Our moderator will call your name aloud and unmute you so that you can speak. For those of you that have been placed in the queue for public comment by selecting star nine, our moderator will announce the last four digits of your telephone number for recognition and unmute you so that you can speak. Participants will have three minutes to speak, just like they would if we were meeting in person. Once your three minutes are up, the moderator will mute you. Also, additional comments can be submitted prior to or at this time to Berkeley, to zoning@berkleymish.net, where residents and community members can submit public comments. Your email must be able to be read in less than three minutes. Given the circumstances of virtual space, we may not be able to read through all emails, but know that we will have them stored and acknowledged on the public record. To participate in public comment, you can dial by phone at 312-626-6799 and enter meeting ID code 99706528278. Mr. Baumgarten, do we have anyone waiting to speak?
No, ma'am, I don't see anybody indicating as such.
Okay, seeing as I just read that, I will give us a minute before we proceed. Okay, I will close the session of public comments. We just needed a motion at this point to adjourn our meeting at 7:46 PM on Monday, May 10.
So moved.
Backed.
Ms. Schluto, can we have roll call, please?
Prue?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Euler?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Gesund?
Yes.
McAlpin?
Yes. Thank you very much for everyone's participation tonight and have a good month. We will see you in June.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.